Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started. This is the Monday, March 1st, 2021 meeting of Mayor and Council. I want to welcome everybody. We have Pastor Dyke for Kirk with Life Church Smyrna Assembly of God at 4100 King Springs Road. Pastor, if you'll come up and invite everybody to please rise for the pledge and prayer.
Would you bow your heads and pray with me? Father, we come before you tonight with grateful hearts. Thank you, Father, for this opportunity to serve our city. Pray that you will bless our Mayor Norton, these councilmen. Pray, Lord, that you will give them wisdom, guide us tonight, Lord, that we can serve our city well. Lord, we're thankful for the way you've kept us in this past year, thankful, Lord, for what you're going to do in 2021. We're blessed and thankful, Lord, to be a part of this great city. In Jesus' name we ask you, amen. You said the Pledge of Allegiance with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you for being with us tonight. Appreciate you. Item two is agenda changes. We have one. We're adding item 2021-083 under the consent agenda for approval of the 2021 CDBG subrecipient agreement. So that'll be under consent. Item three is the mayoral report. I just have a couple of things. First, I want to say thank you to the committee that worked so hard for several months to put on a great Black Heritage Celebration in some difficult times, mostly virtual, a few in-person different activities. But under Dr. Wheaton's leadership, we had a lot of great things throughout the month of February. And I'm just very thankful for everybody that gave of their time to make that such a success. And thank you, Dr. Wheaton, for your leadership. This morning, or this afternoon, at lunchtime, I had the opportunity to be at the ribbon cutting for the 1911 biscuits and burgers on, right there next to the Chick-fil-A on South Cobb at Church Street. And those guys, it's worth noting, gave the first, I think it was the first two or three days of their proceeds to the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation for our first responders. And they also contributed to help veterans at the American Legion here in Smyrna. So very thankful that they're doing business here and hope everybody will stop by and grab a biscuit or burger. They're very, very good. I wanted to report that the Lady Spartans won their region game last week, home game at Campbell. And I think they're still in the playoffs. And then I also just wanted to mention, last Thursday, as we were in our council meeting, committee meeting, had some good discussions coming up that everybody ought to be excited about. We started talking about events, like where people can actually get back together again in the second half of the year. We're going to start our concert series late June or early July. We're planning the Fall Jonquill Festival. We got the birthday celebration moved from August to October, just to make sure everything's good by then and it's a little cooler. So we just want to let everybody know, there's some light at the end of the tunnel in this pandemic. And we're planning events later on in the year that I'm looking forward to. With that, that concludes the report. Item four is land issue zonings annexations. 4A, 2020-233, public hearing zoning request Z20-006. Resoning from NS and RM10 conditional for the development of 10 single-family attached townhomes at a density of 9.3 units per acre, 1.0 acres, land lot 6693302 Atlanta Road, Edgeline LLC. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mentioned 10 units will be split between the two buildings ranging between 3 to 7 units per building. The community will be comprised of 3 35-foot wide townhomes and 7 22-foot wide townhomes. The townhomes will consist of a mixture of front and rear-loaded two-car garages. The floor areas of the townhomes will range between 2,000 square feet and 2,400 square feet. The townhomes will employ a variety of traditional architectural features. The building facades will include but not be limited to brick, stone, cement fiber siding, wood, or cement fiber shingles, and other materials per the attached renderings. The applicant has provided elevations and floor plans for both townhome products for review with the zoning application. Staff is recommending that the development shall not be gated. The planning board recommended approval by a vote of 6-0 at the August 10th, 2020 meeting. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from NS to RM10 for the development of 3 single-family units at a density of 9.3 units per acre with conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Ward 6, which is Tim Gould, and I'm guessing he'll want to turn it over to Rusty for your presentation.
Yes, please.
Scott was asking if you want to swear the public in for public comment.
Sure, we can do that. This is going to be a public hearing. If there's anybody who has anything to say on this or thinks you might, even think you might have something you want to say, come on up and get sworn in by our city attorney, Scott Cochran. Nobody? Okay. Glad we did that, Scott.
Good evening. I'm Rusty Martin. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Smyrna. Mr. Bennett did a good job outlining the general requirements and summarizing the request. I'll add a little bit more detail and then the applicant can fill in the rest. This request was submitted on March 13th, 2020, so it's taken us almost a year to get to this point. The PNZ heard this request back on August 10th. They've made a recommendation for approval of 6-0. The applicant is looking to rezone the property at 3302 Atlanta Road. It's a property that's zone neighborhood shopping. Is located in between 2 residential developments, the Villas Court and Vintage Square. The applicant is proposing to develop the vacant lot into 10 single-family homes, townhomes, at a density of 9.3 units per acre. So this is a downzoning from a commercial zoning down to a residential zoning. The future land use for the property is medium-high density residential, which allows up to 10 units per acre. So with the proposed zoning of 9.3 units per acre, there is no, there's no future land use change associated with this request. The properties to the south, west, and east are all medium-density residential. And then across Atlanta Road, it's got a public institutional future land use. This is the proposed site plan. You've got 3 units that'll front on Atlanta Road and then 7 units that work along the backside of the property that are on a private street. For this development, the applicant is proposing the front setback of 40 feet along Atlanta Road, a side setback of 12, and a rear setback of 40. With this proposal, there will be a right-in, right-out access at Atlanta Road. So there will not be the ability to make a left-hand turn out of the development. There will be a 26-foot-wide access drive that'll go from the access point on Atlanta Road all the way through the development back to a connection point with Villas Court. This was previously proposed to be gated, but staff is recommending that this not be gated so it doesn't interfere with deliveries, access, and maneuverability through the site. This is the driveway connection to Villas Court. And then with that, there's also a vehicle turnaround area located along that access point. There is a sidewalk connection from the townhomes that runs along the southern side of the property all the way to Atlanta Road. And then this is the location of the stormwater detention facility. And then with this request, there are 6 guest parking spaces. The city requires a minimum number of parking spaces of 25% of the total units, so it exceeds that requirement. With this request, there are 4 variances. The first is to allow a front setback reduction from 75 feet down to 40 feet. The second is to allow a reduction of the side setback from 35 feet to 12. And the third is to allow an increase of the impervious surface area coverage from 35% to 65%. And the last one is allow an increase in the row of townhomes from the number of units from 6 to 7 units. The first variance is to allow the townhomes along Atlanta Road to be in line with the existing townhomes from Vintage Square in the building in Villas Court. So you create a continuous townhome streetscape along Atlanta Road for that section. The second variance is reducing the setbacks in line with what it was granted for. Both Vintage Square and Villas Court, they both have 12-foot side setbacks, so this would be in line with that. And third, the increase of impervious surface coverage from 35% to 65%. This property is currently zoned neighborhood shopping. It allows an impervious surface coverage of 100%. So with the downzoning from neighborhood shopping down to RM10 to residential, you're decreasing the impervious surface by 35% over what is currently allowed today. These are the proposed home elevations and floor plans. Just, this will give you all, all 4 sides and what it looks like. And then some pictures of existing product in the metro area. This is the subject property. And then these are the surrounding properties to give you some context. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from neighborhood shopping to RM10 conditional for the development of 10 single-family townhome units at a density of 9.3 units per acre with following conditions from Section 1201 of the zoning ordinance. Number 1 deals with the composition of the homes. Number 2 requires a protective covenants and HOA be established. Number 3 requires open space, a minimum requirement of 200 square feet per lot. Number 4 requires stormwater management. Number 5 requires all utilities to be underground. Number 6 requires the developer to be responsible for any sidewalk improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number 7 requires a stamped or brick paver entrance at the entrance of the subdivision. Number 8 requires the development of the streets to be to city standards. Number 9 prohibits the bearing of debris on the, on site. Number 10 requires decorative streetlights within development. 11 requires the developer to comply with the city's tree ordinance. 12 requires those tree plans to be prepared by a landscape architect. 13 requires all yards and common areas to be sodded and irrigated when appropriate. And then we have a list of special conditions. 14 is the minimum setbacks established earlier. 15 limits the number of townhome units per building to 7. 16 establishes a minimum floor area of 1,800 square feet per unit. 17 establishes a minimum width for the drive, for the private street of 26 feet. 18 requires a permanent access easement through to the Villas of Viennings condominiums. 19 prohibits the development from being gated. 20 requires that each unit is, has a fire suppression system. 21, the rear of the townhomes shall have architectural features that delineate it as, delineate them as individual townhome units. 22 requires a developer install sidewalk through the development. 23 requires a developer responsible for any water and sanitary sewer improvements. 24, the developer is responsible for any fire access improvements. 26 limits the access to the development through a right-in, right-out access point. 27, the stormwater management shall be solely located on HOA property. 28, any trees that are not protected during development must be removed. 29, 29 is the condition of the zoning based on the site plan submitted. And 30, the approval of the zoning is tied to the elevations. And finally, the last stipulation is the additional stipulations agreed upon by, by the applicant in their, their lawyer's letter. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Rusty. Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Rusty. Appreciate, appreciate all your work on this. A couple of questions. The layout's a little bit hard to see on dimensions. What are the driveway lengths for the plan?
They're, they're probably 5 feet, but the applicant will probably speak to this. They'll have in their covenants that there's no parking in the driveway and you've got to use your, you've got to use your garage for parking.
Okay.
And that typically runs with the covenants that would be supplied during the development process.
Okay, okay. And maybe this might be a question for the attorney. But also, so it's, so they're going to be private roads. How would they, how would the community enforce the no parking? What's, have we seen that typically in other situations with those private roads?
They, they would be in charge of enforcing them. They'd get, they would get under contract with the, with the towing company and they would manage it themselves.
Thanks. And if anybody else has any questions for Rusty?
So Rusty, there is a stipulation, and I'm not looking at it any longer, but I was a minute ago, that there is no parking along the 26-foot drive. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you know the width of these units?
I want to say the interior units are 22 feet. And then the, the end units, the wider units are, I think they're, I want to say they're 28 or 30 feet wide at their widest point.
That would be units 3 and 4, I guess.
It'd be 10, 4, and 3.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Missed 10, but yeah.
35 feet. The applicant just came up and said they were 35 feet at their widest point.
That'd be 10, 3, and 4?
Yes.
Okay. 20-foot garage doors, somewhere thereabouts?
Yeah, they would be the standard two, two-car garage door, which would be probably 18 feet.
Rusty, maybe I missed it in your presentation. The guest parking, where is that?
The guest parking is located right behind units 1 through 3.
Got it. How many spaces there?
There's 6.
Thank you. Any other questions for Rusty?
Rusty, the wouldn't, they would have, wouldn't the HOA have to enforce the no parking? Because in terms of a fire truck having access in there, no parking on the street there? Would they, I mean, I guess I, I'm a little confused about that, you know, in terms of parking on the street and it being left to the HOA.
If it's a fire line, and if it's a fire line that's required and it's got the appropriate signage and we would enforce them for parking in a, in a fire line. But if it was not marked as a fire line area and they were parking in the street and the covenants prohibited parking in the street, then yes, they would, they would contract with a towing company to be able to manage the parking in the street.
Okay, thank you.
Outside of a fire access issue.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor had a follow-up on that.
Ms. Lynn?
Along her thinking, so who enforces that they enforce it? Because I see it's a private street. I guess, can you, I know we've recently had a bout with those and sort of insisted that they be public streets. So how does that work? Who enforces them to enforce it, other than in an emergent situation?
Well, that's why the, the street is designed at 26 feet, is to make sure that we have adequate width in the road if somebody is parked in the road to be able to get around them.
Well, I, I can tell you, Mr. Sams knows, I think, where I live because we've discussed it. Our subdivision has, I would guess, their 26-foot roads, 34 homes in a circle. And it is absolutely impossible to keep people from parking, and it's a public street. So I guess I'm a little concerned about how that works on a private street, along with the questions we've heard. But maybe Mr. Sams can speak to it.
Mr. Welch?
Has the fire chief looked at this as far as ingress and egress from the fire truck standpoint?
Yes. When we start the rezoning process, staff gets together. And that is the fire marshal, community development, planning and zoning, the city engineer, and then the arborist. We all look at the plans as submitted. As part of this, they are also required to do a fire truck turning model. And that's based off our largest truck, the ladder truck. So they have to show us that they are able to maneuver the truck through the site.
So that, the turn at the south end of this private drive, then, on to the other development, you're saying that, that the ladder truck can make that turn?
It has been reviewed by the fire marshal and he, he doesn't have any concerns at this point. Well, if it gets approved, then obviously we'll have another opportunity to re-review that. But their engineers have done a turning model on the street layout to be able to access the area behind units 1 and 3. And then they also all pull all the way through the subdivision and into Villas Court.
Okay.
So, Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you. Can you tell us about the common area? I think I saw that as one of the, the conditions.
Right. The common area will be down by the detention facility. Obviously, once they get through the final engineering, that'll determine what the size of that, of that pond is. And they'll, they'll be, they'll be required to provide at least 2,000 square feet of open space for their, for their open space requirement.
Mr. Gould?
Two, two quick things, Rusty. I guess on that one, do we know that there's enough physical space for the 2,000 square feet of community space, along with the required space for the detention area?
It looks like there probably is. And then the other opportunity is they could put the detention underground and have open space above it. So the potential is there, yes.
Okay. And then with the gate removed between Villa Court, is there still a need for the streets to be private?
Yes, because the, the right-of-way width that you would need outside of just the street width is not, is not 50 feet. So it wouldn't be wide enough to be able to accommodate that.
Gotcha. Okay, okay. Any other questions? So it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I may ask the applicant, Mr. Sams, to come up and share some information?
First of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams, and I represent Edgeline LLC concerning this application for rezoning. I've got Mr. Brandon Woods tonight with me, Edgeline. Mr. Eric McConaughey, who was at the previous meeting, has some, some aging relatives that he's dealing with and relocating to the, to another area of the country, so he couldn't be here tonight. And he sends his apologies, but knows you will understand as we all deal with, with, with parents who are getting on in age. But we also have with us tonight, the Chadwicks, the longtime owners of the, of the, of the property. So they may not be able to be conversant with respect to the, the technical aspects of this, but Mr. Brendan Woods is. And of course, I am as, as well. They're longtime owners of the, of the project, the Chadwicks, that is. Chief Bennett, I'm sorry, City Administrator Bennett, and Rusty Martin did a good job teeing this up. And y'all had some, some good questions that I can follow up on and hopefully enhance a little bit as well. This is an application that, that was actually filed on March 13th of last year, which is the day I closed my office, or at least started locking it and spatially distancing and socially distancing, wearing masks and whatnot. So it's been pending for 2 weeks, less than, less than a year. Sometimes those were continuances and tables that we requested. Some were based on requests that y'all had for changes to site plans and other aspects of the zoning. And then quite candidly, there were a couple of times there were negotiations going on between the sellers and my clients that led us to where we are at this point right now. But I'll tell you, just so you'll know as a group, and of course, Councilman Gould and a couple of you are aware of this, we, we're working on this up to the very last minutes of last week and of course, today as well. This property is in an area of the future land use map, which is high to medium density. It doesn't require, or at least this application doesn't require change in your future land use map. Whereas if it were to remain NS, it would be non-compliant with your future land use map. And whereas the Villas exceeds the density allowed under your future land use map. And whereas Vintage is over the, the density allowed on your future land use map. So in all respects, this is consistent with the future land use map, whereas the flanking properties are not. And the existing property, as it's presently zoned, is not either. To be more specific, the Villas of Viennings are zoned RM12 at a density of 18.4 units per acre. Vintage Square, more recent development, flanking us on the other side, is zoned in your RTD district. And it's zoned at a density of 12.2 units per acre. So we sit between 18.4 units per acre, we're at 9.3, which is below the, the max allowed under your future land use map. And then 12.2 units per acre on the other side with the property that is zoned neighborhood shopping. That's been the problem with this property. It's been exposed for sale for quite some time under its current zoning classification of NS. And technically, it could be, right now, permits could be applied for. That's a still legitimate classification under your zoning ordinance. And, and development could conceivably proceed under that classification. But the fact that it's lain undeveloped and idle for all these years, I think, speak eloquently to the fact that because of the long, skinny nature of the property and the, and the minimal amount of road fringe being flanked by 2 developments that are high density, it, it has very little marketability in terms of exposure. And, and you know how that works. And I'm not, I love the commercial that we're a part of here. But, but you know, in, in your, your market village, the further and deeper into the, the market village area you go, the, the less exposure and marketability is there, simply because people are not seeing it as passed by, as passed by traffic. So NS is just not a, not a good classification. And, and our estimations, it's, it's just palpably inappropriate for this site. So when we met with, with Rusty and with staff, and of course, the fire marshal and others, we were able to determine at that time that the staff agreed that it was, it was not zoned properly for the, for your future land use map. Your future land use map embodies the, the policy of the Your future land use map embodies the the policy of the city, and we wanted to be able to come to you, so we weren't asking for a variance with respect to exceeding the the density of this of this either. So we applied for, we were heard, excuse me, we applied for the rezoning, we went through the process with staff, and staff has recommended approval, as Mr. Martin went through very thoroughly. We also went through the Planning Commission, and I hear it was six, so I I didn't recall there being an absence, but in any event, it was back in August, so I'm not sure what happened for breakfast, much less what happened in August, but it was unanimous, there was no opposition then, there there's no opposition now. We've, and there's a reason for that, we've spoken with with area residents, we've spoken with area business owners, we've had contact with the with the the Compton County School District as well. We've also spoken with the Vintage HOA President, Mr. Brendan, I think it's Parkinson, or maybe Parks, and I stand to be correct on that. Mr. McConaughey was not here tonight, spoke with him as well, and of course, they they don't oppose. The original reason for contacting him was to see if there could be any interparcial access between the two, but but the way the buildings are set up, and also frankly, the wishes of the Vintage HOA, they they were not really interested in sharing amenities or or having another road cut through to them. Out of Vintage, you've got full right-in, right-out turning turning movement, so it it could have been advantageous for us, but it it just it just didn't happen, and but Mr. Gould asked us to make those inquiries, and and of course, we we did do that. As Rusty has said, this this is a downzoning, I mean, a literal downzoning. Someone may be imaginative enough and throw enough money at it, so it could be developed in S. It would surprise the heck out of me, but the fact of the matter is, these townhomes are going to exceed many of the price points of the townhomes that you've been approving, these are going to be in the high four hundreds, in the high five hundreds, and I know you don't make that a stipulation or condition of the zoning, but if you look at the unique architectural style that we have, and and the the changes that you see going down the roads, you don't have the same thing, this is not a cookie cutter type development, and you've got a very unusual, unique, and we think creative, way of handling townhomes. We've mixed the photographs, along with the renderings and elevations, and then found out last week that that there were some people who thought, for some reason, this was a surface park project, but it it's not. And it's easy to get that impression from a one-dimensional aspect of looking at a site plan, but it's, they all have two-car garages, it's not surface park, except for the guest parking, which of course, we exceed the requirements for that, and these are all rear-loaded garages. And if you see one of the photographs that was sent as late as last Friday, you can you can see how the the alleyways work, and how the the cars can go in and out through those. To answer some of the questions regarding parking, we have thoroughly, exhaustively vetted this through Tim Grubal, not only at the beginning, when we filed the application, but as late as last Friday, excuse me, last Thursday, when I filed a revised site plan, because at the time, we had a gate between the Villas and between us, that was an obnoxbox gate for emergency vehicles only, fire, public safety, and then concerns were expressed, well, how in the world are UPS and FedEx going to be able to turn around? So we we filed a revised site plan, showing a distinct turnaround to accommodate those vehicles, and my understanding is that the conversation that came out of the Cal meeting last Thursday suggested, well, you know, just do away with the gate, which is fine. We've got reciprocal easements in place with the the Villas, so not only are fire and public surface and safety vehicles allowed to go in and out, so are UPS and FedEx and garbage trucks and residents. One of our concerns originally, and with no disrespect to the owner of the Villas, who happens to be, or at least part of the Villas, one of our sellers, there's really not a want or a desire on our part for the Villas traffic to come up through ours, to to gain access to Atlanta Road, but we don't think that'll happen, because it's more circuitous for them to do that, in that our turning point of ingress and egress is is right-in, right-out only, so there's there's really no advantage for them to do that. And there's every advantage from your fire and public safety vehicles, and of course, your garbage trucks as well, and so the gate, even though you don't have a stip letter that says the gate's out, the gate's out, and I'm making that public representation, the turnaround stays in, if you if you'd like for it to as well. The, like I said, these are all rear-loaded, which makes for a very attractive development, both from Atlanta Road and we think interiorly, and and I liken this more to the, not necessarily the architectural styling composition of Vintage, but the but the clean looks, the the clean, strong lines of the of the architecture. There will be a master mandatory homeowners association with price points that that we have, this will be a pretty hefty monthly fee for these folks, upkeep and maintenance, not only of the the streets, but the the light fixtures, the the subdivision entrance signage, all aspects of the streets and alleyways, and the guest parking, the mail kiosk, everything that you can imagine, will be the responsibility of the of the mandatory HOA, and of course, the mandatory HOA will be guided by a third-party management company at its inception, which will ensure that the HOA is properly insured, properly funded, and properly funded, so as to be able to make repairs to the streets, which even though private, will be built to the city's design and detailed specifications with respect to width, and that was one of the main questions I asked Tim Grubal, the Lieutenant, I guess Assistant Fire Marshal, last week, can I can I say, can Rusty say, can we represent to the Mayor and City Council that you can fight fires as needed, and you have interior maneuverability and accessibility with respect to your largest truck? And he said, yes, and I'm sure he shared it with y'all, I don't know if fire personnel go to your Cal meetings or or not, but but in any event, an unequivocal yes for him, and also, there's a turning movement plan that we're required to file with every revised site plan, and we've done that. So not only can they turn in and out of the project from the street, both at the Villas and at our point of ingress and egress, which is right-in, right-out only, but there's also sufficient radius, radii, whatever the word is, to go in between the sites, from Villas to our project, and from our project to Villas for fire and public safety vehicles. Our engineers have submitted a hydrology study to the the City Engineer, of course, that is subject to significantly more engineering, that's a conceptual study, significantly more engineering will be done with respect to impervious surface. Rusty is is right in that if developed in S, well, it's not going to be developed in S, but we're reducing the the impervious surface significantly, even though we're exceeding the allowed pervious, impervious surface under the this particular zoning zoning district. But suffice it to say, we can't release more water from this site than is being released right now, so we're under that obligation, is a legal obligation, from stormwater management and detention and downstream considerations. This is going to be very attractive from the street, it'll be ground-based monument-style signage, consistent with the architecture that you've seen, that signage will be landscaped, it'll be irrigated, it'll be, of course, lighted, very consistent, and we we, this is not exactly a gateway, but it's a thoroughfare that that has a stamp of the city of of Suburban on it, particularly with respect to Vintage, and again, not not using the Villas as a as a whipping boy, but we we ultimately see that that property is going to be redeveloped and and hopefully redeveloped soon, and we would like for it to become a part of this, although there's there's no specific conversations with respect to that, but I think I think that will ultimately be the the ideal situation for redevelopment of that site as well. You've got a handout that's got all the recent things that we've submitted to the city, and in terms of questions that arose, well, we don't have any, we don't have any imagery that show where the garages are, how do how do we know that these aren't front-loaded? Well, we submitted the imagery with the application with a stip letter, but also last week, showing all four sides of of the towns, and you can see how the garages are configured and situated. Also, you can see that even more clearly with the photographs, it shows the alleyway running down between the row of buildings on that particular product that we intend to to emulate. So this is not a commercial property, no matter the fact that it is zoned that, your school system doesn't want to see it, it's owned commercial, I can tell you that. It is appropriate, particularly to the density of nine point three units per acre, to be the only complying property of the three that are in a row there, and so we're simply asking that you follow your professionals' recommendation, those, your planning staff, your fire staff, your engineering staff, and your public work staff, and we're asking that you follow the unanimous recommendation from your Planning Commission as well. We think this is entirely appropriate from a land use planning perspective, it exceeds all the minimum requirements, as Rusty has has gone over, so with that being said, we do ask that you approve it as presented tonight, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Sams.
Yes, sir.
Detailed presentation as ever.
Thanks, sir.
But thanks for the information in all seriousness. A couple of questions. Rusty mentioned it, and I might have missed it in some of the write-ups, the exterior materials, is it four-sided brick?
It's four, it's four-sided architecture, four-sided treatment on all sides, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, that's great. Is there any tree buffer between this project and Vintage, Vintage Square?
There is a standard trees, and I was just looking at an aerial photograph before I got in here, there's some along the along the frontage, or between Villas and the subject property, and there there's a a little bit of a standard trees between Vintage and this as well, yes.
Okay, anything on anything on this subject property, or is it just the ones on Vintage side? So you're not planning to put anything in?
No, just, obviously, we'll be submitting a landscape plan for your Arborist review and and approval that will include vegetation along that, just for attractiveness and for for privacy considerations as well. Not because Vintage asked us to, but but simply because we think it helps demarcate the two the two different developments, and and they quite clearly, and I don't mean this in a bad way, they quite clearly didn't didn't want to incorporate this into their development. If you look at the architectural styles, two disparate or disparate, how do we pronounce that, two different architectural styles, they just didn't feel like it melded with them, in terms of, if we did something like that, we would want to have access, obviously, to their their amenities.
Gotcha, so I did talk to Brandon Peterson, who's the HOA President today, and I know there was a conversation back in February, I believe, between the folks from Edgeline.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that's what it was, but he had said there was really never, his his expectation was it was going to be a follow-up, to come back with either a proposal, some framework, or some information, that they could go and go talk to their community, and that had, that didn't take place, so in in his mind, when I asked him today, he didn't think there was really any kind of conversations about joining the two properties or sharing, maybe that was just his his interpretation of it, but he didn't feel like there was much of a conversation there, so maybe it's maybe perhaps a misunderstanding?
Well, I can't speak for someone I didn't speak speak to, I can tell you that Mr. Eric McConaughey didn't just speak when I met with him, and I know that I saw iterations of plans showing the the engineering unfeasibility of being able to connect the two, if you if you've been in Vintage, and I know you have, then if you take a right, going back towards our property, you see the position, that first row of buildings, there's just no logical connection without going right behind someone's and someone's back door, candidly, with the way the buildings are situated and runs of six there.
It's kind of beside the point, but the the dead end really lines up with their dead end, almost, exactly.
Yeah, I'm just telling you about the the iterations I saw of the of the site plans from an engineering perspective, that our engineers thought didn't didn't work, so I apologize, I don't know anything beyond what Mr. McConaughey has told me of that, I have not spoken with that gentleman.
Okay, so I'm not sure if they would have if they would have been interested or not, but I don't know how much, really, really, what kind of conversation took place there, so.
Well, and I'll and I'll tell you this, that if if there is a desire, and and there is some way that they believe there can be connection, and and if, unlike what I've heard, that their membership had, in fact, weighed in on it and was not interested in, and then we'll certainly can can continue to explore that opportunity.
Okay, let's see, oh, hey, the the photographs that you provided in your packet, which I appreciate, could you tell us where that community is located?
I have no idea.
Is it?
This is this is Brandon Woods, those were acquired from TSW, which are our engineers, this is Brandon Woods, you can take your mask off.
Yeah, the the photographs are on the west part of town, city of Atlanta.
Okay.
Kind of west, west side.
Okay, any idea how long that community's been in in place?
It's fairly new, within the last two years.
Okay.
Yeah, TSW is a well-known architectural firm that that takes the, you know, suburban-urban approach to design, so we 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 like the plan, and we've we've enjoyed working with them.
Gotcha, yeah, okay, thank you, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Sams, that's all the questions I have at the moment, if anybody else has some questions.
Any other questions? Mr. Welch.
Mr. Sams, I I see on the one of the photographs here, you mentioned the four-sided brick, one of one of the units that I'm looking at appears to be something similar to building number one, but that end unit, which would be number, unit number three, appears to be a board and batten, is is that going to be four-sided brick as well, which, I mean, I like the look of it, I'm just questioning.
Yes, sir, it it is, what you have to, you don't have to know this, but what I would appreciate your understanding is, they will design a specific architectural style, and our stipulations and those imposed by the city said it has to be in substantial conformity to what what we show, and it will be, but you have my representation, it's on the record, it can can become a condition, stipulation, zoning, and that is, it is to be four-sided, equal treatment on all sides, yes, sir. And and of course, the city didn't allow a hundred percent horizontal siding, whether it's board and batten, or or hardy plank, or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welch.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Sams, and you may have said it, can you tell me again how long the driveways are?
The driveways are probably five and a half to six feet in in width, so the as as the owners approach, they will open their their garages, and there's sufficient turning radius with the the streets and and that driveway to to get cars into there, that they're not sufficient, cannot park another vehicle within the driveway, not even sideways. And if you've been to meeting place in the city of Marietta, this will be constructed much the same as those with respect to the interior infrastructure.
Thank you.
And and by the way, Tim Grubal wants to fight fires, he doesn't care how how he gets there, just as long as he can get there and fight it from both sides, and we, on the no-parking areas, the the curbs will be painted red, the street signs will be up, but in addition to that, we'll have the statutory signs that allow us to be able to have a towing company tow the cars away. You asked, well, who enforces the mandatory HOA? Well, we will enforce the mandatory HOA, or or do, as you requested in some other instances with respect to other issues, that could become code enforcement, such as rental and otherwise, and if you would like, we can, we can certainly report to the city, or have some overview, or whatever you want, but with with homes at these price points, no one wants someone else parking where they can't get by, but even if there is a car parked on the street, your fire apparatus can get by.
Any other questions for Mr. Sams? Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I guess back to the parking question, it looks like you have six parking spots, correct?
Guest parking spots, yes, sir.
Is there, like, say, someone has a party, or something like that, where do you envision them to park?
They'll use the the guest parking space, and if there there need to be more parking there, then someone's going to shuttle them to the site.
Okay.
And 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 I'm not an apologist for for development, but there's the overlook across the Marietta Country Club, where they didn't even have guest parking requirements back in the day, and and so what they do there with with parties, they do park at the Marietta Country Club and shuttle them over there, not a good situation, but as little as five years ago, there was no guest parking requirements under most anybody's ordinances, but but there is now, and and so that'll be the the primary utilization of those.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Sams. I know we asked folks earlier, this this is a public hearing, is there anybody come in since we started this item on the agenda that wishes to speak to this agenda item? All right, we'll close the public hearing portion, and I will turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thanks, Mr. Sams, appreciate the all your hard work and your and the work of your of your applicant, and of course, my staff. It's a it's a challenge one, it it's it's a creative design that we really appreciate, I think it's it's suitable for that area in many respects, but it's it's challenging because of the one-acre size, and ten units on one acre, in my mind, is is fairly fairly aggressive, regardless of what's on either side relative to the acreage of the both those different communities have, so it's a, I think it's a different situation. So I think it's a different situation. But again, I do think it's in line with, the creativity and the design is in line with what's appealing to me. So, Mr. Sams, I think Rusty might have mentioned to you, would you be open to reducing the intensity of the project?
I talked to Rusty this morning. He did mention that you had that question. No. It's, if it were reduced, it would, in any size, number one, it would, by even one unit, it would be the lowest density townhome development you've passed in the past seven years. But more importantly than that, the Chadwicks have owned this for a long time, it's not marketable or sellable as NS, and if they lose any density, the deal just crater, the numbers don't work.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to deny the application. I would, on a couple grounds, around existing conditions that affect use. It's challenging across from Campbell Middle School, pedestrian safeties, and traffic safety is an issue. And then, you know, the proposed use would affect neighbors. The 12-foot side setback with minimal tree buffer, I think, is, encroaches on the folks of Vintage Square particularly. So I think it's too intensive an application for one acre.
Not privilege, certainly, but we would like for someone, we would request that someone make a substitute motion to table the application, so we can work the numbers again to look at it, and perhaps I spoke out of turn, I thought not, but perhaps I did, in terms of whether it could reduce the density. So I would ask for a substitute.
Thank you, Mr. Sams.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sams.
We have a motion for Mr. Gould to deny. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I want to make a point, I think that Mr. Sams offered to table this?
It's, it's.
Yeah, you can, there's no.
You can withdraw your motion.
The substitute motion is what's on the, if there's a substitute motion, that will be the motion on the table. That takes priority. So if there, did you agree to a substitute motion to table?
I agree to a substitute motion to table, yes.
Okay, then that's the motion on the table now.
Okay. So I have a motion for Mr. Gould to table. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, the motion to table, please vote. Our motion to table is approved 7-0. Thank you. Does that need to be to a specific date, future date, or?
Yeah, if.
I'd like it to be the next mayor and council meeting. This has been going on for a year.
Yeah, we should, we should move it to a specific date, that way you don't have to advertise again.
Then it'll be to the next council meeting, which is?
So that'll be part of the minutes?
The 15th?
Continue to the next council meeting.
Right, 14th? What's that?
They've got, would it be acceptable to move that to the, instead of March 15th, to the 30-day?
It'll be, there's five Mondays in March, so it'll be the first council meeting in April.
April 5th.
April 5th. Right? When's the, so after, the next one is April what, Heather?
April 5th is the month 30-day mark.
That just gives more time, the property.
Right, but Mr. Sams, on that day, we have some folks out of town. I'm not sure that it would be in your interest or anybody else's to bring it forward on that date, so.
No, so the 15th will be fine, and perhaps we can move more quickly than I anticipated.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. The next item B is 2021-082, accept dedication of Riverview Park in a form acceptable to the city attorney. Said acceptance is subject to the requirement that the Riverview Landing Owners Association Incorporated remain obligated to maintain the detention pond within the park as currently required by the amended and restated master declaration, and is also subject to all drainage easements contained within such master declaration. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. As part of the Riverview Landing mixed-use development, the developer has agreed to transfer approximately five acres of property to be used as a public park along the banks of the Chattahoochee River. The park has been amenitized by the developer with a public parking area, public bathrooms, a small stage, inciting area, and a boat launch. Maintenance of the detention pond within the park will remain the responsibility of the Riverview Landing Owners Association. This will be the first park within the Smyrna city limits that will be located on the river. Staff request acceptance of the park property along the Chattahoochee River.
This is in Ward 7. I'll turn it over to Dr. Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Bennett, for reading that. You know, this is a really good opportunity, I believe, for the city, and a beautiful location, and a location with a lot of good opportunity to do some really cool things. As Mr. Bennett indicated, this is a unique landscape, being down by the river, and the opportunity to have a city park down by the river gives some new amenities to residents that citizens have never had before, and that's just a tremendous opportunity. So with that, I'd just like to make a motion to approve item 4B, 2021-082, to accept the dedication of Riverview Park.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Thank you. In our meeting on Thursday, we were talking about possibility of moving some food trucks over there, and having some music, and different things in the fall, so excited about that area. Item 5, privileged licenses, we have one, license 2021-03, privileged license request license 2021-03, beer, wine, and liquor, retail package, 3150 Highlands Parkway Southeast, Suite 202, prohibition liquor LLC, doing business as prohibition liquor with Matthew Bowman as the agent. Is the applicant here? Come on up. I think we've seen you before, am I right? Yes, sir. Glad to have you back. This is in Ward 7, Dr. Wheaton.
Okay, so the first time I was here, I had an issue with the location being too close in proximity to another package store, from door to door, in a straight-line distance, which is a state requirement that I wasn't, I was unaware of. The leasing agent for that building, who's also the leasing agent for 3150 Suite 202, was able to basically transfer my lease to that other property, so I just have to reapply for the liquor license through all. I got another survey, that property does meet the distance requirement. The survey company that I did use was referred to me by the state, and the state actually came out there and walked it with the wheel, too, to make sure I met the distance requirement as a courtesy to me. Actually, I am keeping the other building, too. They gave me the opportunity to turn it into a restaurant, I'm going to turn it into a breakfast bistro, so hopefully I can turn lemons into lemonade, because I already put money into that property, about $70,000, as far as tearing down, and committed to a contractor, and we did some other things, so hopefully I can, like I said, turn lemons into lemonade. But that's pretty much it.
Well, look, I definitely appreciate you, you know, you're interested in developing and being in the city here. Glad you're able to get those issues squared away. I'm glad to hear, it sounds like you're taking that particular next step in this new location seriously to make sure you're meeting all the legal requirements, certainly all the same things that we talked about last time you were here.
Yes, sir.
I think you were here for another long night meeting with another zone, in case I believe that we talked.
Not nearly that long.
Not nearly as long, not nearly as long, but thorough, how about that?
Yes.
But yeah, all of those things certainly apply from that conversation to with this location. Yeah, so with that, I'll make a motion to approve item 5A, license 2021-03.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. I'm sorry for all your trouble when state gets involved, you know, you just never know, but thanks for your service and for doing business in Smyrna.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Have a good night.
Item 6 is formal business, 6A, 2021-077, approval to amend the budget for the purchase of a 2021 Ford Explorer XLT Sport four-wheel drive from Wade Ford via state contract in the amount of $37,922.85 for the city administrator, and authorize the finance director to sign and execute all documents. Mr. Bennett, you need a new car? The background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Per the city administrator's contract, a vehicle is provided as part of the compensation package. The vehicle previously assigned to the former city administrator was transferred to the Environmental Services Division back in September to replace their assigned vehicle that has unreparable damage. And the interim city administrator, myself, has been using the assigned police chief vehicle for the last six months. The city needs to purchase a new vehicle for the city administrator and return the Smyrna Police Department outfitted vehicle to service at the police department. The finance director has received a quote for a 2021 Ford Explorer and the need to amend the budget to account for this expenditure. The funds will come out of contingency for this expenditure. Requested action is for the approval to amend the budget for the purchase of a 2021 Ford Explorer XLT in the amount of $37,922.85 for the city administrator, and authorize the finance director to sign and execute all documents.
If there's any question, anybody, that Joe's not watching every penny and being a good steward of taxpayer dollars, I got a call from Wade Ford saying, "Your city administrator's haggling with us on the price." So, thanks for doing that. I'm going to turn this over to our budget chairman, Mr. Corky Welch.
I have to ask if this vehicle's going to have a police package on it?
No, sir, that was more expensive.
Okay. Hearing that, I make a motion to approve item 6A, approve and to amend the budget for the purchase of a 2021 Ford Explorer XLT Sport four-wheel drive from Wade Ford.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Congratulations, Joe. Item 7, commercial building permits. We have one, 7A, 2021-055, issuance of a commercial building permit for construction of the Covenant United Methodist Church, 3395 Atlanta Road, ADE Builders, Inc. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you. As mentioned, a commercial building permit has been issued for 3395 Atlanta Road for the construction of a new 17,807-square-foot church building for Covenant United Methodist Church. The total estimated cost of the project is $3,208,000, and ADE Builders, Inc. is listed as a general contractor for the project.
This is in Ward 1, Mr. Pickens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just make a motion to approve 2021-055 for the commercial building permit for Covenant UMC.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's not showing up on my screen, so, 7-0, okay, thank you. Item made is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A, MIN 2021-12, approval of the February 11th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, MIN 2021-11, approval of the February 15th, 2021 Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item C, MIN 2021-13, approval of the February 15th, 2021 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. And item D, 2021-083, authorization for the city of Smyrna to continue as a subrecipient of the Cobb County Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program. Plan year 2021 to receive the grant amount of $308,481 for public facility projects and administration and planning. Authorize the mayor to sign and execute the 2021 subrecipient agreement documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item 9 is Ward of Committee Reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the Public Works crew for their quick work this week installing the speed humps on Campbell Road and also the Planted Island. It's a much-needed improvement, and noticed that cars are driving much slower down there, so, thank you.
Mr. Wagner? No report. Mr. Lindley? Mr. Welch?
No report, Mr. Welch.
Ms. Wilkinson? Mr. Gould?
Can't pass it up. I also want to thank staff for making the speed coming changes to Campbell Road. It's really much appreciated, and I know residents are already expressing their pleasure in seeing cars driving slower, so, thanks very much.
Dr. Wheaton?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. You mentioned, Mr. Mayor, just a shout-out to the committee for the Black History Month celebrations. We had some really good events, mostly virtual, a few things down at the library as well, but the good thing, I mean, at the library and at the museum, but the good thing is a lot of that will live on, now that we have it electronically documented. So that's a perk of having to do things. In a pandemic, sometimes they last for a little bit longer. And also, I want to give a shout-out to the Cub Scouts down over at Life Church in Ward 7 in Smyrna. I got to hang out with them last Tuesday. They wanted to talk about civic engagement, had a good conversation with them, and I'm happy to report that we had a lot of questions about police and police activity, and a lot of people that are interested in law enforcement in that group. So, good talking to those young boys and girls as a part of the scout troop down there at Life Church in Smyrna. With that, I yield.
All right, item 10 is show cause hearings. We have none. Item 11 is citizen input. We have one person signed up, Stephanie Gray, 1013 Belmont Commons Drive. Come on up.
Good evening. So I'm going to paraphrase as much as possible, since I'm limited on time, but I am here to discuss the state of policing in Smyrna, or more specifically, police misconduct and abuse of power. On Saturday, two days ago, I witnessed multiple police cars with a young black man and woman pulled over, and all of their belongings from their car strewn in the median. As I normally do, I pulled over to make sure that they were okay, and to take video, because we've seen what is often the result when multiple officers stop unarmed black people. And I refuse to allow another one of my brothers and sisters to be murdered at the hands of those who are sworn to protect us. As soon as I stopped my car and asked the kids, and I'm referring to them as kids because I'm a mother, if they were okay, Officer Godinez, badge number 1351, yelled at me to ask why I was there. When I said I was just making sure that they were okay, he proceeded to approach me in an aggressive manner. He appeared to put his hand on his gun or his taser, and yelled at me that if I did not leave, I would be interfering with his investigation, and he would take me to jail. When I informed him that I was well within my rights to film, he then told me it was my car that was the problem, and that I could simply move across the street and continue to film right over there. So I obliged, and I did continue to film. At some point, a female officer arrived to search the female that they had pulled over, and I witnessed, after her search, Officer Godinez speak to her, motion to me, and then the female officer drove over to my car and began running my plates. When I asked the female officer what the issue was, she told me that she was instructed by Officer Godinez to give me a ticket for driving while using my phone, basically filming and moving my car across the street as he had instructed me to do. I asked her how she could give me a ticket for something that she did not even witness, and she said that that was Smyrna PD policy, that they did not need to see what happened, they could just go by the word of Officer Godinez. Officer Godinez was clearly retaliating for my having the audacity to hold Smyrna Police Department accountable, but I find it interesting that he sent another officer to do his dirty work. I assumed so his name would not be on the ticket. I then crossed the street to speak with Officer Godinez again, to document my experience and to get his name and badge number. He was then aggressive with me again, was hesitant to show me his badge or tell me his name, and yelled at me multiple times to get out of the street, even though I was standing where I was, because I had to, to speak to him, as he refused to get out of his cruiser. I assume he was quickly trying to leave the scene once he realized that I was going to be filing a complaint. I also believe that he continuously yelled to get out of the street so that he could later have an ex- have an excuse to arrest me. As I walked away, Sergeant Martin then said to me, I'm sorry, yelled to me, "You good ma'am?" And I said, "Yes, I'm just attempting to get the name and badge number of this officer." He informed me that his name was Sergeant Martin, and he was the officer supervisor, but he did not volunteer, Officer Godinez's name, as he should have. I asked again, he did then tell me his name, and I said, "Well, since you're the supervisor, may I speak with you?" And he yelled to me, "No, I'm not going to speak with you." I have this on film. While there were several concerning instances with this interaction, one that I'd like to point out is the fact that not a single officer was properly masked, nor attempted to put on a proper mask at any point during this encounter. As an infectious disease epidemiologist, I would expect law enforcement to abide by mask-wearing standards during a devastating year-long pandemic that has claimed the lives of over half a million Americans. Those officers potentially exposed myself, though I was double masked, and those kids to COVID-19. I'm not here today to argue the validity of the ticket. I'm not here today to get two officers disciplined nor fired, although I absolutely believe they deserve it. But that's because that won't get to the root of the problem. Perhaps those two, Sergeant Martin and Officer Godinez, were just bad apples, which I'm sure many of you and your colleagues will try to gaslight me by saying.
Ms. Gray, we're gonna have to wrap up.
You can hold one second. However, I will remind you, the full saying is, "One bad apple spoils the bunch." So my goal here today is to shed light on the harassing and retaliatory practices employed by the Smyrna Police Department against taxpaying citizens, and I'm here to demand change. So I want all of you to learn my face, because you're gonna be seeing a lot of me, and I'm gonna be holding you accountable. Thank you.
And I know, Ms. Gray, that Sergeant Defense has met with you or spoken with you, that you have a meeting with our acting chief in the morning, and that this is being reviewed, so thank you for coming here this evening. Anybody else want to say anything this evening, any other citizen input? All right, if there's no other business to be brought before this body, I declare us adjourned at 8:12. Thank you very much, everyone.